Thank you. Okay, it is 6:04 PM. I'm starting this meeting. We're calling it to order. It's being audio and video recorded and it will be placed on YouTube and rerun on Channel 9 via the Cable Television Committee. And of course, you can always participate via Zoom. The telephone number listed on the agenda as well. And with that, I'm going to yield the floor to any department heads who may have anything they wanted to share. Any updates, anything that they think other departments may benefit from, any knowledge you wanted to share with us. You have the floor, just unmute yourself. And Selectmen Pacheco and Selectmen Goulart, that includes you both as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start just by saying that the first responders in town, police, fire, dispatch, harbor masters have all started with their vaccinations.
Good work, Chief. Chief, do you mind if I take a second to comment about that?
Sure.
All right. I just wanted, for those who are unaware, Chief McGee has coordinated first responder vaccinations with the Somerset Fire Department. And I just wanted to commend Chief McGee for his proactivity, his just commitment to keeping our first responders and our public safety officials, and even including our harbor masters, safe. So I just think it's important that we applaud your efforts and your commitment, sir. So thank you very much.
No problem. Glad I could help.
Does anyone have anything else they wanted to share? Selectmen Goulart? Oh, nope, she's muted. I'm sorry. I thought she was trying to unmute. I guess I'll share something. I don't have, you know, many updates on it per se. But Mrs. Brady, Jeff Carvalho, Mr. Ferry, and I are tentatively thinking about a project on Pleasant Street that would fit the Shared Streets and Spaces Program grant application. We're sort of pressed for time. There's a January 29 deadline and a February deadline. Obviously, we want to do our due diligence and not rush anything. So I'm not quite sure we'll make that deadline for this round of applications, but that's fine because we have a plan to include perhaps a special article on the annual town meeting warrant for the planning and perhaps the survey part of this, to sort of get the ball rolling on it. So that's good news. It's on our radar. I hope that the new town administrator will start soon. And this is something that we will sit together, all of us, and make sure we're all on the same page. So we don't miss a beat in terms of any grant opportunities that we have to do some public works projects. And it's been, it's been really a good experience, I have to say, just being able to work closer together with everyone. As you know, the board of, the town administrator really is the day-to-day go-to person, right? And the Board of Selectmen, for the most part, come in, you know, we get a prize of things. But we're not the day-to-day managers, per se. It really is the town administrator. And so not having the town administrator the last two months has been, at least for me, really instructive. It's allowed me to work closer with department heads like Mr. Ferry, working closer with the town accountant, Mr. LaViolette, on some budget work. Just really trying to familiarize myself the best that I can before the next town administrator comes in and takes over, back over the day-to-day work. So it's been a really awesome experience. Been a little, you know, exhausting and stressful and all those other things. But the perspective that I've been able to gain as a select person over these last two months, I think I will take with me for the rest of my tenure, for sure. I mean, it's been a really good experience. So I just wanted to thank all the department heads for, first of all, dealing with me, second of all, for helping me, and third of all, for just being the good, committed partners that I have grown to know and come to respect. So thank you all. And I yield the floor for whoever would like to give an update.
Dr. Z?
Yep.
I'm sorry. I've been waiting for a phone call from the VA and that.
No worries.
So I, what I wanted to know, Chief McGee was talking about getting the first responders vaccinated. And so my question was, Chris, did you have to leave town or did the vaccine come into town?
No, it's actually a drive-through vaccination at the Somerset Fire Department.
Oh, that's good because I know that, I heard the governor talk about, you know, using Foxborough Stadium and all that. And I should say the parking lot. So that's really great that it's that close.
Yeah, that was, that's for departments that didn't have something pre-planned that the first responders could go to that location. It's a central state location for anybody who needs it.
That's great. That's great. I just want to add to what Dr. Z said. I want to commend everybody, all of our department heads, all of our employees, everybody who has really made an extra effort, I think, to assist with the operation of the town without a town administrator. And also during an extremely difficult time, this pandemic, that none of us have experienced with. But in my interaction with town employees during this time period, I just want to say thank you to everybody. You've done a great job. I tried to say that in that message that we recorded early in December. And I truly just want everybody to know, I think you've all done a great job and the cooperation has been super. I don't think we've missed a beat. So thank you, everybody.
I totally agree. Selectmen Pacheco, did you have anything you wanted to add? And then I wanted to introduce our newest employee after.
Yeah, no, I just want to thank everybody also, as Mrs. Goulart and yourself. Compliment them and all the hard work that they've been doing the past, during the past pandemic. It's unique to many of us, most of us. My mother was one year old when the last one happened. And she doesn't remember it, so I can't get any information from her. The other thing is I want to add about the Medal of Honor that's coming to town the end of March. We should start preparing for that, for Frederick Anderson. And his family's coming here and going to deliver it to the town. So we should think about that and start doing some planning for that, so.
Selectmen Pacheco? To that point, is, when you say coordinate, my assumption, and I know it's a very weird time right now because we, we don't technically have a veterans agent. Mr. Hershey is still graciously, literally doing the job without the pay, and we appreciate that very much. However, I guess my question is, is this something that the Veterans Department is coordinating with Mr. Anderson? Is this something that the Board of Selectmen's Office? I think we need to figure that out so that we can start preparing. I assume, because, Mr. Reins, you're very familiar with the arrangements that were going on before the pandemic started regarding the Medal of Honor ceremony. Is that something you plan to work on with Mr. Hershey, still?
Yes, Dr. Zagravas, that's correct. And also, I've had contact with Mr. Mo Gazel, and he's the older gentleman from Rhode Island who basically got all this off the ground and started. And he has requested, if he's not physically able to attend, that he'd like the family to present the medal to me, and then I would present it to the town on behalf of the Anderson, I'm sorry, on behalf of the Anderson family, as far as I know. Yes, we will have to coordinate. I know that they're going to be in town for a very short time. I believe it's March 29 through the 31st, I think. Can, am I correct, Mr. Pacheco, in saying that?
I believe so, yep. I believe that's the dates.
And I'd like to coordinate with everyone. Mrs. Ehrenstein, our former town administrator, she was working very diligently on this and also their proclamations as such that will be given to the family and presented to the family. We need to find out where they are. I would suggest that someone please reach out to Mrs. Ehrenstein just to see if that's still available within the confines of the town somewhere. I do look forward to the opportunity to receive such a Medal of High Honor, especially in distinction for our great town of Dayton with Mr. Anderson's connections here. And I'm sure that the members of the Board of Selectmen feel as such as well as our veterans agent.
I just wanted to add to my board colleagues because I'm not sure who was CC'd on the email. I think Mr. Hershey was and the Board of Selectmen and Mrs. Brady were. But Mrs. Kerwin is in touch with Cecilia Miles, Mr. Reins, about this.
Correct.
So I know our office has had some contact. Do you want me to forward you that correspondence? Because I don't believe that you were CC'd on it.
I did receive that from our, from our administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen, Mrs. Kerwin. Yes, I did receive that. So I do have that information.
Okay, awesome. All right. So more to come on this.
If, I'm sorry, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. Reins. Okay, I did speak to the Star Commission last night, and they would also like to participate in some kind of ceremony. So they're aware of it also. Thank you.
Miss, did you hear that, Mr. Reins?
Yes, I did. And I believe that the Historical Commission and, they should also be involved, absolutely. If we can have, depending on what the circumstance may be surrounding the pandemic and guidance from our local Board of Health, that maybe we could have, say, one representative of each of these boards involved and individuals involved in committees to be able to attend. That way, there are not a lot of people there, and we need to find a location. Possibly, the police conference room would be able to provide such a venue. That's something we're going to have to look into. So there's a lot of caveats, so we need to button up as quick as we can, so.
Absolutely.
And Dr. Zagravas, if the floor is open, if I may, I don't know if Mrs. Easterday is in with us this morning.
Yep, Mrs. Easterday.
And so we at the Planning Board have been in discussions, and it was mentioned at the last meeting that we're going to go forward with a proposal through our budget to purchase a new printer scanner for our office, which would be a dual-use unit, not also only for us, but also for the zoning Board of Appeals Administrative Assistant.
And the Conservation Agent, I think, will be down there as well, using that.
Yes. And so what we're looking at is that we're looking to purchase a piece of equipment that's very similar to what you see upstairs in the mailroom inside the town hall and to also have their maintenance contract be awarded through possibly the same individuals. So we're looking into that, and it's going to be a presentation. We're going to make it at the budget meeting. As in regards to things that are transpiring right now, we're in the midst of receiving some information in regards to Forest Hills. I'm sure that many are familiar with that. That's a subdivision that was passed in, I believe it was 2008, and they're getting ready to come back to the Planning Board, to us. So we're getting all our research together in regards to that. So we just want to let everybody be aware of that's coming to us. Also, we are going out, I'm going out as a representative of the Stormwater Committee this morning, I'm sorry, this afternoon sometime, to do a walkthrough at a solar site in town with the Stormwater Committee. So we're very proactive in what we're trying to accomplish. And also, one of our members has gotten some information in regards to what other communities in the state, especially in the western part of the state, what they're trying to do to control the growth of solar. And possibly, you know, we're working on some type of, possibly a BIAR to present at town meeting in June that we could probably hopefully curtail some of the growth of the solar farms.
Fabulous. Thank you, Mr. Reins.
Dr. Zagravas, if I may, I'd like to put on just another hat briefly.
Mr. Reins, I just, I have a hard stop at 11:00 AM, and we have agenda items today. So if this is pertinent to everyone else, please feel free. But if not, I would like to move on.
Yes, it is. It's an email that I received. It was from a resident in town. It's in regards to what's transpired down at our basketball courts. And the information that was provided to the resident that I provided was that, you know, due to the ongoing pandemic and the guidance sent down to.
There's a further update. The Board of Health is now involved, and they have addressed that concern. One hoop is in the water, and the other hoop needs to be reinstalled once the governor allows more players on the court.
Correct. I was going to, yes, absolutely. I was going to, I was going to make the statement that, yes, I've been in contact with the Board of Health, and they have sent out the information to that resident to let them know that. So thank you, Dr. Zagravas.
Thank you, sir.
And the Board of Health.
Thank you. My updates are, Mr. LaViolette and I sent out the FY '22 budget sheets. I apologize for the confusion. We were supposed to split it up, and half would go back to him, the ones he sent out, and half would come back to me. So if I send you a budget sheet, that needs to come back to me. If you got it from Mr. LaViolette, you send it back to him by January 31st. If you have any questions regarding anything, meaning the actual spreadsheets that you received, please email Mr. LaViolette about that, okay? And I can help too, as needed. Is that okay with everyone? Did everyone receive their budget? And I should have mentioned this first. I apologize. We're good? Okay. I did want to also introduce Lisa Caledonia, our fabulous Conservation Agent. Hey, Lisa. She will be, and Mr. Aguirre, I do want you to jump in on this because this is really your realm. We have housed Lisa temporarily downstairs in the old zoning board meeting room, simply because of capacity issues, the 25% occupancy limit. When Mr. Aguirre came back from his well-deserved vacation, obviously, they were already at capacity of the four people. And so Mrs. Caledonia didn't have a space. So she will be downstairs. I didn't know if you wanted to touch upon this at all, Mr. Aguirre?
Sure. The gentleman, Highway Department gentleman, moved Mrs. Caledonia's desk over yesterday. So it's in place. I know Chris Rowner, the IT person, was in and setting her up. I think she may be all set because I think Thursday, tomorrow, is a day for her to work in the office. So the meeting room is not being used. Lisa, we're not throwing you down into a room without some thought. That's not being used. So it's a nice, quiet space for you to use in the interim. And then as the upstairs town hall renovations progress, I'll put more thought into reconfiguring downstairs and come up with a nice, permanent space for you. But I think in the interim, it'll work well.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'm working in the old zoning room space right now, and I have my desk, and I appreciate that. I just, I brought in my own laptop today because I wasn't sure. I don't see the desktop here yet, but that's fine. But I appreciate everyone's help with trying to get me settled in. I, I have the phone number being, the main line being transferred to my cellphone as needed if anyone needs to reach me.
Awesome. Yeah, my whole thing was, rather than have Mr. Aguirre scramble to try to make a new space, I mean, he already is working on a bunch of renovation projects. I just thought it made more sense. Nobody is using the old ZBA meeting room. It's a big space. And it's close to planning, so you can have printing and copying and scanning and all that. And Carrie has a friend again downstairs. I just wanted to say, in all seriousness, welcome, Lisa. I'm excited about what you'll bring back to the Conservation Commission. And it's just, I'm really excited about it and all the work that you'll do. So thank you so much and welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you for everything. Thank you.
Okay, I yield the floor.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Uh-oh.
Sorry, I wanted to go back to Mr. Reins.
You have a, you sound robotic. Does he sound robotic to everyone?
Yeah, there's an echo.
Yeah, there's an echo.
I apologize.
Say something?
How do I sound now?
Ooh, still robotic.
Okay, all right.
Are you on in two different spaces? I don't see.
No, no, I'm in the dining room here at my house right now. It is kind of echoey in here. Maybe that has something to do with it.
You can go, Chris. I'm sorry.
Sorry. So I just wanted to catch up with Mr. Reins's conversation regarding the printer, the presentation that he wants to make. I was under the impression, is it just a presentation on what we're looking to purchase? Because I think it's already been funded. It should already be in the fiscal '21 budget unless I'm mistaken.
I think you're, Chris, you're thinking of the plan copier that we requested. So that's a different one. We are looking to replace, we have a copier, a traditional copier in our office right now that is really old. And it's kind of become an obsolete, and it's actually kind of dying. So we're looking to replace that with another, with a multi-function machine that will do traditional copies, that will be eight and a half in ledger, but also do the scanning and the faxing as well. And that will also eliminate, because we also have, so we have our traditional copier and scanner, but we also have two color copier and fax machines and scanners. So it's like we have three machines. So we're looking to consolidate all three machines into one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Dr. Zagravas, I just have a very quick question to ask.
Yeah. And did you want to add anything about the discussion about the printer? I'm sorry. I didn't even see you on, Mr. Reins. I thought you had dropped off. My apologies.
No, no. Mrs. Easterday covered all the avenues in regards to that, and the information provided to Chris, the town accountant. I would just like to just ask a question. Serving as the town's transfer station attendant, does that put me in the realm of a possibility of receiving a first dose of vaccine because I deal with the general public on a basis of two days a week?
I don't think so, but I'm certainly no expert, and I would really want to default to Chief McGee on this, Mr. Reins.
No, it does not.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
No problem.
Thanks, Chief.
Chairman Zagravas, if I may, this is Jim.
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah, I, I don't want to interfere with the printer discussion that's ongoing, but I know Mrs. Brady may not be on. The two units that we have now that Carrie is describing, one is upstairs at Town Hall, and we have one at Old Town Hall, we lease those units, and it's worked out very, very well. The, it's very affordable. We're not responsible for any maintenance. Anytime we have a problem, we call. They show up within, within a day. So, you know, if I'm correct in saying they're looking for a unit like we have upstairs at Town Hall and like we all share at Old Town Hall, we currently lease both those units. So that may be something they want to look into with our vendor.
So we've requested two quotes. We requested a purchase and a lease option from the same company.
Okay, very, okay, very well. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have anything? Mr. Gale, I know you probably do. We'll wait if it's okay with you until we get to your specific agenda items. Mr. Ferry, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, it's kind of a question. So with this new employee, is it like Mr. Wilson, the Tim the Two-Men's neighbor? You never get to see her whole face. I mean, I met her with a mask on, and now we can't see her at all, you know?
I'll let her answer that, Mr. Ferry.
There you go. Thank you.
You know what it is, Mr. Ferry? She's probably has the laptop resting on a table that's like, and she's a lot taller than the table when she sits up, so that's why the laptop can't capture, like, it's looking up almost. I have to put my laptop on books so that it's like level with how I sit.
I know everyone probably rather have me, me have my mask on, but it's nice to see her face, yes.
Absolutely. Selectmen Pacheco and Selectmen Goulart, did I, have I missed anything, any updates for all the department heads? I'm trying to think. Oh, everyone was aware, obviously, that I had to do an executive order because we didn't have a meeting for a month to extend the FFCRA. I assume everyone, every department head understands that that has not been ratified yet. That vote will occur tonight. Obviously, we don't know what will happen. But, so that will be on the Board of Selectmen's meeting agenda. I'm also assuming every department head understands how the FFCRA works and how it, you know, impacts your personnel. So does everyone, are we all on the same page on that? I know there are certain issues that get raised because we have a pandemic, and we all have, you know, there are CBAs and individual contracts, and we're all confronting different issues that arise, you know, for the first time almost. So I do understand that. But I just want to make sure everyone has a general understanding of just how the Families First Coronavirus Response Act works and what your employees are entitled to per that provisional extension. So obviously, I am not a federal employee. I cannot extend the act. What I did was, I did an executive order to extend the provisions of the act, meaning the 80 hours of employer-paid sick leave so the employee does not have to take any sick time out of their accrued benefited sick time. So that's what the act stipulates. If anyone has any questions, you can always reach out to me. I'm always happy to help. I know it's sort of confusing. But I'm always happy to help provide any clarity that I can on that. Does any department head have anything else they wanted to share before I move on to new business? Which, by the way, if you are a department head and do not want to stay on for the rest of the call because it's sort of some discussion items that may or may not pertain to your department, you can feel free absolutely to drop off. You are not required to stay at all.
I do have one question with John, John now being gone and the lack of a ZBA office administrator. How do you want, so John went over outstanding items, and I'm happy to take care of what needs to be done. But how do you want me to handle things that needs to be done for like their meeting or whatnot? Do you want me to go through? I'd hate to put a burden on a board member or Karen or Leon. I'm just wondering how, how you want me to address either the board or the ZBA board, I should say. I'm not too sure how to handle that part.
So I do want to hear what my colleagues think about this, and then I'm just going to give you my personal opinion, Mrs. Easterday.
Okay.
What's going on right now is, we obviously have advertised internally for the two weeks. I think that ends this week. Then we need to, if we don't get anything, right? We don't receive any applications internally, then we need to post on, you know, MMA.org and collect the applications and screen, and then do the interview and hire someone. I'm going to be perfectly honest, Mrs. Easterday, our office is so busy not having a town administrator, we cannot take this on. So my advice would be, I've been in touch with Mr. Karen. Their board is going to have to pick up this work, just like the Board of Selectmen had to pick up work because our town administrator left. Just, it stinks. Everybody has a job. I have a job. I had to pick up slack. You are busy. You have your own work. Planning Board is not a board that doesn't have stuff to do. I really would just prefer if you reach out to the chairman, Mr. Karen, and coordinate with him. You cannot do their work. You should not have to do their work. They need to figure this out as a board, and if they need help, they can always call me. But they need to be self-sufficient on this. That's why they were appointed. And, and I would love to hear the comments of my colleagues on this.
Okay.
I was going to say the same thing, that I think it should be the chairman of the ZBA or other members coordinate the meetings and all that kind of stuff. I don't want the burden to be on Carrie or our support staff. No, Brett, as you just indicated, it's very tight in our office. It's very busy. So I think, for the time being anyway, we're going to have to see if the ZBA can pick up the slack.
This is, this is Mr. Gale, and I would say, as a member of the ZBA, I think that if our chairperson reaches out to myself and other members of the ZBA, and if we have to have an informal conversation about who can pick up what portions of what slack in the interim period, I think that knowing the things that I do that are currently outstanding and need to be worked on. I think that knowing the things that I do that are currently outstanding and need to be worked on, we can we can manage that. The biggest thing that we have right now, besides the the regular monthly things that come up, is Strawberry Fields. And that's something that has to be ongoing and has to continue. Um, because of the process involved with the with with the board and with the the other side and their legal counsel and our legal counsel. So I think if if that's probably the biggest thing to have to coordinate in terms of how that's going to be handled. Um, but I think that if Zach's able to reach out to us, we can get it done.
And and I just want to be very clear. I'm not saying I will not help, uh, Mrs. Easterday. What I'm saying is I don't want that work to come to our office and I don't want Mrs. Kirwin or Mrs. Brady to be doing any of that work. Including posting meetings. I'm always happy to help. I help with other boards. I help with the Open Space Committee. I help with the Agricultural Commission, getting those meetings posted. Um, so whatever is needed, we can coordinate. Do you have Mr. Karen's contact information?
Um, I, you know what? I used to have it before John was here. But um if you could send it to me just to make sure I have the current information, because I know sometimes it's changed.
Yep.
Just to make sure I have the current one. And again, I don't, I don't want to say I I don't want to help out. I'll be more than happy to help out. Um, like, I'm happy to check the Daily Mail and do some various things like John had gone through. Um, extensively some outstanding items and I'm happy to help out with that. Um, and reach out to Zach on, you know, the needed basis and whatnot. But I just want, I want to make sure it's clear on how the chain of command, I guess.
Exactly.
Lack of a better term.
Mr. Chairman, let me.
How it works.
Let me ask you, Mr. Chairman, if we as as ZBA members, um, given the circumstances and given that this would be. A conversation potentially for an assignment and temporary responsibilities. Do we do we need to hold a formal ZBA meeting that's posted for the town? Or can we hold an informal conversation um with all of the members to discuss our our temporary responsibilities? Until there's a new hire?
I think what what I would do is just, I mean, I feel like the it's only a violation of the open meeting law. There's what, five people on this board or seven?
Uh, five, I think, or six.
Yeah, but you can have a conversation with the chair and one member about what the delegation of duties are going to be.
Okay.
Um, you should try to have a meeting, of course. I'm not going to say don't have a meeting. But if the schedule's tight and you can't have a meeting and you need to get something done and it's time-sensitive as a as a board. Or something needs to come from the ZBA specifically in a time-sensitive manner, let's say pursuant to Strawberry Fields.
Right.
Then then one member should have a conversation with the chair and figure that out and that's not a violation of the.
Okay, and we we do have a publicly scheduled meeting. I think our next one, excuse me, is on the twenty-seventh. Um, at this point, Carrie, do you know at this point if anything has been discussed with anyone? Um, I saw an email pass by the other day with regard to how that's going to be hosted or how it's going to be handled or no idea?
Um, how it's hosted, I don't know. I know it's been scheduled on the Zoom and it's ready to go. Um, and I know it's been posted. And I know typically like, you know, cable will run it, like as far as hosting to let people in, but as.
Jonathan Jonathan generally did the hosting.
Yeah, so that I'm not sure. I think that would have to be a discussion with your members on how to handle that.
All right.
That might also need to involve Mrs. Kirwin with, it may be a Zoom like access thing. So that part you may need to loop in Mrs. Kirwin for.
I will reach out this afternoon as a member and and put that on Zach's radar.
But just keep in mind that the the Zoom account, that's the one that is linked with the planning board. It's not the.
It's not ours, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Main one. Yeah, there was something that Mrs., you know what, uh, Mrs. Easterday, if you could circle back with Mrs. Kirwin on that. We had to transfer Zoom access because the main person was Mrs. Aaronstein at the time, obviously. And when she left, we had to transfer the uh like managerial rights of the account to Mrs. Kirwin. So we may need to do something like that uh as well.
With John's account, with John's part, okay.
Or just simply change the email address to Zach Karen's or to Mr. Gail's or whatever. So we may need to figure that out, but that that's, I think we can figure that out.
I think I can, yeah.
Yeah, that's shouldn't be too bad.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Easterday. That is a really good point.
Mrs. Easterday, also, if there's anything, just as a member, I know we have to go through our chairperson of the ZBA. But if there's anything in the interim I can help you with or pass information on or even contact information for Miss for for Mr. Karen, let me know.
Sure.
I'll circle back with you after the meeting and get you the his cell phone, Mrs. Easterday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Z.
Yep, Selectmen Gular.
Um, at a minimum. The ZBA has a clerk. Statutorily speaking, the clerk is one responsible for all this. Obviously, um, they had Jonathan to take care of um normally what clerks do. I would think at a minimum, there needs to be a recorded message uh temporarily on that line that indicates. Uh, who to contact or leave a message here and someone gets assigned to checking all of those uh voicemails. Obviously, uh, the chairman can work out all the details, but you have a clerk and that's who should be working with Zach. Uh, and at least handling the uh telephone account as far as the message goes.
I agree. Yep, and you may need to circle back on the message for the telephone prompt with Mrs. Brady. Because I know she's the guru on that. If it's okay, I'm going to move on to new business. We have twenty minutes. I ha unfortunately have a hard stop right at eleven today. Um, the first business, uh, and again, department heads, this is very specific, most of it to the ADA Commission. Um, and then we have an IRS vote uh on the mileage rate and then some minutes. So if you don't want to stay for this, by all means, drop off the the call. So we want to review, discuss and act on the final draft of the Commission on Disability Townwide Mailer. I think it looks good, Mr. Gail. My only thing is, I'm pretty sure when it was created, it's called the ADA Commission. So I think we need to change the name. But other than that, I think it looks good.
Yeah, Dr. C, I can tell you that the Commission on Disability had changed their name, so whether we have to go back to the board. Uh, to change the name, but we had felt that this was a better description of what we actually do. Well, Jonathan can respond to to that also, but we just thought that this was a better uh description of what we actually do as a board.
Okay, and we and we have always referred to ourselves as the Commission on Disability. And we've adopted that in other things that we've done in conversation. We've had other townwide or even going out of town, we refer to ourselves as the Commission on Disability. And in fact, that's what our, when we get to it eventually, that's what our bylaws refer to as well, is the Commission on Disability.
Okay, someone needs to update that on the website because it says ADA Commission and.
I realized, I realized that and we were literally, um, just recently, I've I've gotten some information. Um, from the Selectmen's Office on how to go in and make changes to the website, which I can't do, but my admin will be doing.
Okay, yeah, if you need anything with access to the website or anything, let me know. I may not have given anyone that, so please remind me.
Okay.
Dr. Z, since we're appointing authority on that commission. I think the Board of Selectmen may have to vote to change the name because you know how we make those appointments in June that go for the next, whatever the time period is. Uh, so we should vote prior to uh our annual appointments to change the name of this so that um. Everything, everything works, okay?
Yeah.
This is Mrs. Gular. We will, when when we've sent you a for for another conversation, the copy of the bylaws. To be approved by this by the Board of Selectmen, so that might be the opportunity for the name change.
Um, Mr. Gail, I just, not to get off track, and I don't want a discussion about this, because again, I have a hard stop and we need to make some decisions. Um, the reason I did not include the bylaw discussion on here is A, we don't have time today, unfortunately. And B, um, I feel like I appreciate that you sent us the bylaws as a courtesy. Um, but really, those bylaws wouldn't be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Bylaws are approved by the town meeting vote. Selectmen Gular, am I correct on that?
Yes, and we have a bylaw committee, so has uh has the bylaw committee, the town bylaw committee. Have they worked with the uh Commission on Disability so that they're all together on this? Because it's the bylaw committee that would have to bring this to the Board of Selectmen on the warrant.
So they. The answer to that is no.
So I'm going to answer this, Mr. Gail. They didn't because it's a bylaw review committee. And because we don't have any current bylaws on disability, they would have nothing to review. Does that help? I know it's confusing. The bylaw review committee, Selectmen Gular, is reviewing the bylaws already on the books. Are they relevant to now? Are they? That's sort of what they're doing? Um, but I do agree with you, um, that they're a bylaw review committee. So I think they should probably help whoever is proposing a bylaw and reviewing whatever is proposed. Before it comes to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on a warrant article.
I agree. And not only that, when they get through reviewing all the bylaws that we currently have. This is a committee I think that we should have as a standing committee to work on future bylaws. So as an advisory commission aboard to the Board of Selectmen, so I I agree with you.
I just, I felt it important, even though it's not on the agenda, to let Mr. Gail, Selectmen Pacheco know. It wasn't because we don't want to discuss it. We just didn't have time today. And it's not solely in the Board of Selectmen's purview. Um, I'm happy to read them. But I do think that maybe we should work with the bylaw review committee, Mr. Pacheco and his team. They meet regularly. And maybe get that on one of their agendas, work anything out that needs to be worked out and then send it to the Board of Selectmen. You know, for inclusion for the annual town meeting warrant.
I I I will have conversation with Mr. Pacheco to get that information so that we can get a copy over from to review. Um, just before we move on, so that you know the reason we did it this way and and put it together and sent it to the Board of Selectmen to review is. In the recommendations from the Mass Office of Disability, whose model we followed to put this together, that's where this came from. Their recommendation is that the bylaws be put together and then sent to a local board, the local board of selectmen.
Yeah.
If that's what's required for review and approval to then be posted as a warrant article for town meeting.
Sure.
So just want everyone to know that that's where that came from.
No, and I appreciate it because it'll give me more time to actually go through them, Mr. Gail. Um, my thought was, we just didn't need to discuss them specifically today because we have some time. You know, we have a couple of months to get.
And that's fine. I realize there's time. We just wanted to get them up there.
Uh, does anyone regarding the actual mailer? I think the mailer looks good. My only question was about the ADA Commission. I wanted to ask, um, if there are no objections to the mailer in its current form. My question for Mr. Gail is, um, I assume the responses, the mailing, the return mail will come to you. Or to the ADA Commission. Will the ADA Commission be using that to create some sort of a database?
Absolutely, yes.
Disabled Dito-nians?
Yes.
That you will keep, you know, you'll have it confidentially.
I will, I will have it and will not be able to share that information with the members of the commission. That's going to be something similarly to.
Uh huh.
Um, uh, the Veterans Officer, you know, he has this information that he keeps confidential and cannot share. It's a similar concept. So, you know, ultimately, part of this, for example, besides just having the mailer and hopefully getting uh written, oral, verbal, email, whatever response is. We plan as a result of that to follow up with a survey as well on specific needs based on the responses. That information also will have to be kept by me uh separately, privately from everyone and anyone else. Um, and we will ultimately, I'll probably take those documents and we'll we'll determine a secure location to have those files kept at Town Hall.
I had one more question about, m- maybe it wasn't about the mailer. Oh, yes, it is. Just a logistical question, Mr. Gail. Where is the funding for the mailer coming from?
That's the question, that's the that's the million-dollar question here for the fifteen-hundred potential dollar expense.
So I guess my first thing is, um, does the Board of Selectmen have an account with money? So that's my first question. And my second question is, uh, miss, this is for Selectmen Pacheco and Mr. Gail. Will you be, will the ADA, right now, we have an ADA Coordinator budget, right? And it's literally just for the ADA Coordinator.
Correct.
Will you be expanding to sort of like a ADA? I don't know what, whatever the budget will be called, but will you include stuff that the ADA Commission needs? Because it sounds to me like not only may you need a uh budget for things like a mailer, professional and technical supplies. You may also want to think about, depending on on how active you're going to be. Having like a part-time, five-hour-a-week secretary or something. I want you to have those conversations. And figure out what the needs are.
We are, we are currently, um, actually, our next meeting, because we have to consider these the things that you're raising right now. And discuss budgetary uh restraints, constraints, or, you know, parameters. Our meeting on Thursday, which is our next meeting, and one of the items on there is the budget. So, yes, we will be looking at putting together a budget that covers everything you're discussing from admin support. To the hours that that I put in, to um having some money there for trainings and so forth. Keep in mind, this isn't, this is a new commission and as a result of that, there are, for example, some trainings that the board. Members or the commission members should be able to avail themselves of.
I agree.
We didn't know last year when we would have it or if it would be started last year, so that was not built into any of this, nor were the actual hours that we expected would be necessary. It was an attempt to get it off the ground.
Yeah.
Which we've done, and I think what we're finding is already is that there's a significant amount of work. Uh, we're involved in one way or another. So, yes, we are in the process of putting this together.
Okay, um, so I guess my question, Mrs. Brady. I assume that they they they're going to need money out of the Board of Selectmen's budget. Where would it come from? Because they don't really have one, um, which is fine, because the ADA Commission wasn't created when we did the budget last year. So, you know, they couldn't have money for it. Um, Selectmen Gular, I guess I'm just, we need to make a decision because it's almost eleven. And I'm okay with the mailer. It obviously should go out. We need it. We need a repository of information for people that have disabilities. Who we need to not forget about in an emergency or in a with a pandemic response or a vaccine distribution. Um, what are we thinking?
Uh, I have a question for Mr. Gail. Mr. Gail, I understand the need for uh privacy relative to all of the data. However, will this data be shared with first responders so that if fire has to uh go to a location or police or ambulance? They will know that there is somebody there that who might need um some special attention, let me say. In an emergency response.
The end, the the answer is to a point, yes. And you know, this goes, this goes into other things as well. And this is just to answer quickly, this is a conversation I've had with with the state specifically. Because I was looking for separate guidance for people with disability. And this falls under Title II of the State Code and under Title II of the State Code. It is my responsibility as a town employee to be able to have access, full access to this information. And to only be sha sharing this information with Emergency Preparedness Services or the Health Department as absolutely necessary. In any other case, this requires HIPAA, any other situation, this will require HIPAA release.
Right, uh, uh, relative to the mailer, those photographs that are there, those three photos, are those local residents?
No.
Well, I can tell you that if you are going to use photographs, especially of children. You're supposed to have written permission from the people in the photographs. I ran into this when I was working on the town uh book back in two thousand and twelve. And there was a specific caution about photographs of children. And I did have some in the book and parents gave me written permission. I just caution you on using photographs of people that you have not gotten permission to use. Just something you need to think about.
Those photos were.
You guys, I have literally, I don't mean to cut off discussion. We have literally eight minutes and we've not made a decision.
Those are stock, just to answer the question. Those are stock.
Dr. C, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the final draft of the Commission on Disability Townwide Mailer. And we're going to have to address the cost for this at maybe at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Is the twenty-seventh too late, Selectmen Pacheco, before I entertain a second?
I don't believe so, but I like, Mr. Gail can answer that question.
The answer, I think, is no, because by the twenty-seventh, I can actually give you, hopefully, within a couple of dollars, the exact cost.
Okay, and you'll use the town uh bulk mailing account?
At, I will use the town bulk mailing account. My intent also, in terms of printing costs, I've actually left a message already. For example, for the uh, uh, the Plymouth, um, what am I thinking of? That they, the school, I'm having a brain freeze. I know you have to go. Anyway, I'm trying to keep the cost down.
Do we have a second?
I'll session for, I'll second for discussion because I have a question.
Selectmen Gular, yep, you have the floor.
Mrs. uh Taviras, you started to say something in response to what I said about the photo. Could you just? Just answer that.
Yes, sure. Um, these are, they are stock photos and they are licensed. For use.
Excellent.
For non-commercial purposes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Mr. Gail, I did cut you off and you were saying that as well. I apologize.
It's okay, no worries. I was just trying to speed it up.
Okay, um, let's move on to, I'm sorry, we need a vote. All those in favor say aye? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries, roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Selectman Pacheco was an aye as well.
Yes.
Um, uh, I will entertain a motion to appoint Jonathan Gale to the Pandemic Response Committee. And just before I entertain that motion, I wanted to add, the Pandemic Response Committee has tasked Mr. Gail in his capacity as the ADA Coordinator and also as the Chair of the ADA Commission to assist in a, um, drawing up, I guess, or including disabled people in our emergency dispensing site plans. Um, and so I think it's obvious, you know, if we're tasking him with something related to the pandemic response, then he should be on the committee. So I will entertain motions.
I'm going to make a motion that Jonathan Gale be appointed to the Pandemic Response Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries. Next on our agendas to vote.
Roll call.
Roll call, excuse me, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have to vote to adopt the new mileage rate from the current rate of fifty seven point five cents.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I just quickly ask, I know you have to get to this quickly, but my, um, request was also for emergency preparedness.
Yep, I want to do a little more due diligence on that. I need to, I want to speak to the committee. I'm not even on that committee, Mr. Gail, and I just, it makes sense to me, please, no, I'm not saying no. I just want to speak to them, that's all. Let them know, um, that's all, because I'm on the pandemic response force, so I feel comfortable to that you should be on there and make that decision. I'm not on the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Let's Mrs. Brady put this on for the twenty seventh of January. And Mr. Gail can start his work with the Pandemic Task Force immediately, which, to be honest, Mr. Gail, is really the, uh, committee that's being active right now in relationship to, um, the vaccine distribution.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board adopt the, uh, new rate for mileage reimbursement as set by the Internal Revenue Service at fifty six cents per mile effective, I believe this is the first of January. Is that correct, of January first of twenty one?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. I would like to, under discussion, note that this is the first time since I've been a selectman that it's gone down. So.
It's gone up and down a few times.
Oh, okay, I usually I only ever see it go up, so.
Sometimes it's half a cent, I mean, really? Whatever.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries. And next, I will entertain motions to release the executive session minutes as listed on the agenda.
Okay, Mr.
Roll call on the.
Roll call, excuse me, on the mileage rate.
Aye.
Aye, good catch, Selectman Pacheco.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the following executive session minutes be released. I am not going to do this entire list because I have the list back from Mrs. Brady that we recently did. There are some on here that are not on the original, on the list I'm looking at. I want to look at them one more time and we can add them to a future agenda. So my motion is, we, um, approve the release of the following executive session minutes. Uh, August second, two thousand seventeen, September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, November the eighth, two thousand seventeen, November the fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, and February thirteenth of two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those, uh, discussion, excuse me?
Uh, Mrs. Goulart, I know you have some concern about some of these executive board minutes. Are these okay?
So, yes, there's going to be a second motion on ones that I am going to move not be, uh, released. But yes, I've gone through these and, uh, these are okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, that motion carries. Sure, yes.
I move that the following executive session minutes not be released for reasons such as attorney-client privilege, ongoing discussions regarding projects in town, property discussions, uh, property donation discussions and litigation and potential litigation. And these dates that I'm saying I recommend not be released at this time, uh, January ninth, two thousand nineteen, January twenty third, two thousand nineteen, April the tenth, two thousand nineteen, December nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, March twenty first, two thousand eighteen, March twelfth, two thousand eighteen, September twenty sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Uh, before I second that, do we have a roll call on the previous vote that we just took?
Aye.
Aye. I'll second. Did Mrs. Goulart vote on that?
Uh, I, uh, these are more minutes that I did review and I will, uh, just for public information, um, Dr. Z knows this. The reasons for not releasing these were, uh, reviewed by Attorney Gay and he agreed with what I said and he had some caveats which I have tried to follow closely. So I feel that we're on solid ground on continuing to hold these.
Okay, so Mrs. Goulart, before I second this motion, I asked for the roll call from the previous vote, we didn't do a roll call, so are you aye on the previous vote?
Yes, I did say aye, yes, I'm sorry.
I'll second this motion that Mrs. Goulart just made.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just to wrap this up, Dr. Z and, uh, Selectman Pacheco, I will look at this list and I will go back and review any that are on this list that I have not mentioned today and will bring these forward for action at a future meeting. I'll talk to Mrs. Brady, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, before we adjourn, I just want to apprise my colleagues of something that has occurred. I think we were all CC'd on the awful email yesterday.
We're going to call a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm so over the roll call. We got a horrendous email. I'm not going to go into it, it's a public record, anyone can request it. I have been in contact with Mr. Ferry. I asked him if he would assist in us flying a gay pride Prag Florade, uh, Florade, a gay pride flag in support of our LGBT community. And if anyone has any objections with us flying the flag, um, please let me know. I know we don't typically as selectmen, I don't recall ever voting on, uh, I know we voted, Selectman Goulart, on the flags that you had on, um, Somerset Avenue because we were installing them. I don't recall us ever approving flags per se. Does anyone have an objection with that?
The only flag I know of that we acted on, and it was a long time ago, is the, um, POW MIA flag.
And my, my proposal, Selectman Goulart, is not to touch the flag, the American flag or the, obviously, the POW MIA flag. It's to fly it under those two flags.
Okay, so my question is, I think this ought to go to the Human Rights Committee. We ought to come up with a flag that expands to other groups also, not just limited to that. I agree with you a hundred percent, at least in June, uh, Gay Pride Month, we should maybe fly that flag. But I think for the rest of the year, we we may want to think about a flag that encompasses a lot of other, uh, groups that may be discriminated against.
Yeah, we can do both. We can have a DITN, uh, flag and a gay pride flag and whatever other flag people want to fly, I have no issue with it.
I don't know how many flags we can hold in.
We'll need a new poll. Well, thank you both, I appreciate it very much. And absolutely, uh, Selectman Pacheco, if someone wants to work on signs or, uh, flags, a hundred percent, you know I'll support it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else before we, uh, entertain motions to adjourn? And I will remember the roll call.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you aye, Selectman Pacheco?
I did.
Okay, everyone, thank you so much, and we will rendezvous this evening at six PM.
See you tonight.
See you tonight.
You did.
Have a good day, Mr. Ferry and Mrs. Caledonia.